Okay, welcome back to our special council meeting. Thanks for indulging us 15 minutes so we get a bite to eat. We'll bring this meeting to order and approval of agenda, please.
Resolves that the agenda for the May 27th, 2025 special county council meeting be approved as presented.
Go over in secretary, please. Deputy Warden Ketchba and Councilor Hens, all in favor. Welsh and Carries. We have introductions, recognition, memorials. We have Akatus here, welcome. And we'll move down to adoption of the minutes. Have none disclosure, pecuniary interest, I imagine there is none. Presenting positions, presentations, allegations, we'll just move on down to Peter's. Peter's report nine point one and we'll open the floor up to you, Peter, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to the rest of county council. Thank you for everybody's attention today. This special meeting is meant to serve as an information session to counsel. It's it's. There's been a lot of work to date here to develop the transportation master plan as you see it today. You've received the phase one report previously, which identified all the opportunities and needs across the county. And I and also identified many of the different initiatives we're looking to achieve with the transportation master plan. We're now at the phase two slash phase three. Report that's been presented to council. It was emailed to county councillors a couple of weeks ago. And most recently included in this agenda package because it's a wealth of information. It's a 200 page report. There are 39 action items that are recommended to be implemented. The implementation timeline, what the scope of each implementation action item has not yet been completely vetted. Has not been presented to council that will come at a future time. We are currently in the midst of PIC number two. It's available on engage Elgin, the documents that are shared with council. A slide deck presentation summarizing the conclusions of the phase two report are presented on engage Elgin. This session will be live streamed, recorded, made available on the web platform as well for any interested party of the public. To review, it will serve as a virtual PIC. The the report has also been circulated to our municipal partners and including the city of St. Thomas staff. To gain their input and comment suggestions that they may have in regards to the action items. And so today is meant to be an information session to counsel. We have with us Anna Mori. I've personally worked with Anna for this is might be four or five years since we started the TMP. And and today is the first time I met her in person and she was not seven feet tall. I didn't actually know if she was. Anna is the technical manager of mobility and advisory for Ontario with Arcadis professional services. They were IBI when council first hired them a number of years ago, and now they are Arcadis. But Anna has remained consistent as the project manager throughout the process. So that's been very helpful for consistency. And I think Anna has gained a full understanding of the county of Elgin and its surroundings and the initiatives we're hoping to implement. The next steps for this after today's meeting is the public information session will conclude mid June. We will summarize all those responses received. We'll also take any comments we've received from council during today's session. And whenever they may come up, if you're if you have any questions or comments or concerns, please forward them to my attention. And we will summarize the responses and provide recommended action items. That will look very similar to what you're seeing today at a future committee of the whole meeting. Once that's fully digested and understood, it will finally go to a county council meeting. And the adopted product will formulate the final TMP. Once that final TMP report is prepared. Then it has to go and be circulated one final time for 30 day public review period. That's consistent with master plans. And that that final report will then be implemented, probably a timeline of September before it is finally implemented. But there's lots to unpack and digest today. We're hosting this forum in a special meeting of council to encourage more open discussion and dialogue. And we think it would probably be best if councillors had a comment about a relevant section that we're currently reviewing. To ask that question now, we don't want to necessarily go back into the report. And Anna understands she may get interrupted a number of times in the delivery of the report. And that's good because if something comes on your mind, you want some further information, please ask those questions. We're going to do our best capturing the the comments you've you've provided as well as it being live stream. We may review it also in the future. So with that, I'm gonna pass this on to Anna, who's going to present a slide deck. It's a little different than the PIC two slide deck included in the agenda package. What you received was the Folsom 200 page phase two report. And the PIC slide deck that's included on the engage Elgin website. And his presentation builds upon that phase two presentation and adds a little more clarity and additional information. So with that, Anna.
Thanks, Peter, appreciate that introduction and I am very glad to be here with you in person and able to present where we're at and and our draft recommendations. Okay, moving on to the next slide, please. Okay, thanks. By way of agenda, I'm going to provide a bit of a study overview and process and talk a bit about the online public engagement that's going on right now as well. I'll outline the transportation master plan vision and goals which provide a structure for the TMP. The focus will be on the draft recommendations and we'll touch on next steps as well. Okay, next slide and next slide, thanks. Okay, so the transportation master plan is the county's first standalone master plan, transportation master plan. It takes a broad look over the next 30 years or so to 2054 and. Identifies policy directions and infrastructure plans that may be needed to meet the the county's vision for transportation into the future. And we we like to remind people during engagement for. For the study that when we talk about transportation, it's all modes where sometimes people think, oh, transportation, is that buses? Is that passenger transportation is that roads? It's it's all modes that we're looking at cars, trucks, rail, public transit, cycling and walking. And the study is it was branded with the county back in 2021 when we started as Elgin in motion. So we're using that that logo and branding throughout. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, the study process, it's it's been a long road with some detours. But we're making good progress. The study started with phase one where we identified needs and opportunities through technical analysis, research and engagement. And we prepared a phase one report. And then we moved on to responding to the needs and opportunities in phase two and three. But then a lot changed in the county, we had to take a pause. And we restarted in 2024. We had to review the needs and opportunities given the new context. We prepared a phase one update report with updated needs and opportunities and context and traffic counts and and so forth. And now we're in phase two and three. Phase two is developing and assessing network, network alternatives, road infrastructure and so forth. But also the developing or sorry, also the supporting strategies and policies that just go hand in hand. Both are are needed to 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 bring Elgin towards that transportation vision. And so. Yeah, we've got the 39 actions that result that we'll be going over today. And then in the future, we'll be preparing. TMP summary report will just it'll be a lot more action oriented. It'll detail some of the actions and targets by 10 year time period and provide some costs as well. After we get some some general buy in on on these draft actions. Next slide, please. We're doing our second round of engagement now. The first one was was back in 2021. Now we're reaching out for some feedback on our draft recommendations. We have the online public information center at the study website. And there's a sample of it on the right there. On the slide. Documents are available at this at the study webpage, the information boards, the the draft phase two, three report, the phase one update report. As Peter mentioned, we have engagement open till mid June. We do have some focus questions on cycling per the the council's previous direction. And there's been some promotion of of engagement as well. Next slide, please. And one more, please. Okay, the transportation vision was developed together with with county staff and presented to the public and stakeholders. And. It just had some some minor tweaks together with the the goals that that support the vision. I'll just read it quickly. Elgin County's transportation network will be efficient, dependable and flexible and meeting the evolving needs of residents, businesses and visitors. And traveling to, from and within the county while reducing its impact on the environment. The network will support safe multimodal travel options regardless of age, income or ability. So we have, we've identified six goals that support that vision. Three are sort of overarching goals. They are more like a lens through which we we look at. The 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 actions, for example, environmental protection and fiscal responsibility. And future readiness like those those guide us to try to optimize the existing infrastructure as opposed to try to. Build excessive new infrastructure with infrastructure with a lot of environmental impact. And we have three mobility goals as well. We have efficient county and interregional connections, so those focus. Yeah, the the actions really support those focus on the longer distance travel through motorized vehicles through through transit as well. Goal five is healthy communities, so those those actions supporting that goal. Mostly relate to cycling and walking and then also the goal of economic prosperity. It's important to support the economic drivers in the county as well, trucking, tourism, so forth. Next slide, please. Hey, the the network development, so the the figure on the left there. Shows sort of a step by step process as to how we arrived at the draft recommendations. We started with the vision and and identified goals that support that vision. And the needs and opportunities that we identified through the phase one work we've organized under the most applicable goal. And then we identified actions that would speak to those needs and opportunities and. And we assess those broadly through the the six goals. And we've arrived at a pretty solid set of 39 draft recommendations that have been really tailored to the county. To to respond to its context and and needs so forth. And and there's a wide range of actions. Some of them are just supporting for continuing what the county is already doing. Some are expanded or improved infrastructure. We've identified some transfer of infrastructure jurisdiction that we think would be appropriate. And so forth. So I'll just move on to what those draft recommendations are next slide and next slide, thank you. Okay, so the. Goal of efficient county and interregional connections. We've identified six focus areas of action. And listed the the topics that fall under each of those on the slide. I won't read them because we'll be going through them in turn in a moment, but six focus areas and 24 actions in total for for this goal. Moving to the next slide, please. Okay, the first focus area is responding to anticipated road capacity constraints and. When we first started the TMP, we didn't it didn't seem like that was going to be as big a concern, but with all the changes in the county, all the growth and. Industry and the increased population growth that comes along with that, that that is a real key concern that we need to address. I'll actually, before we get into the detail of these actions, I think it'd be best to go to the next slide where we have a map, thank you. So the. Just look, looking at the traffic growth in the in the county. When which corridors would face the most growth and capacity constraints. It's really focused in the area around St. Thomas and also a bit in Almer. Some areas. Where there's some constraints that we think will need to be addressed are. Well. Well, we we do know that the the province is is looking after. Supporting some of the movement, traffic movement to and from the the new industrial area. But but there's more that the county will need to do to help support that. Wellington Road, County Road 25, just south of Highway three with Ford Drive being. Closed off at the roundabout that's planned, that's that roadway is going to face some additional traffic demand. We we looked at some. Well, we we know there's going to be increasing travel demand north and south between East St. Thomas and Highway 401. So we we looked at some possible ways to address the capacity constraints there. Highbury Avenue was identified early on as a possibility, but we've also seen that traffic has also been growing on the parallel routes. Could we potentially improve those parallel routes to address those concerns? And while that may help a little bit, it's it's really not going to help as much as. Adding capacity to Highbury Avenue. We also know there's a lot of, well, with with the growth, with the future development of the hospital lands. Especially there's going to be some additional traffic pressure. Norman Lindell area, Sunset Drive. We we looked at potential options to address capacity south of St. Thomas and. Yeah, through all this, just the the role that the county roads will need to continue to play. In connectivity and bypassing St. Thomas's increasingly congested roads. It just seemed to be really important. Next slide, please. Oh, yeah, we'll we'll go back in a moment. So this this map. Outlines the recommended capacity improvements. In Elgin County, focused in St. Thomas and Elmer area. So we have, we've identified a couple of of corridors for potential widening. And that's Wellington Road, south of Highway three and Highbury Avenue for widening from two to four lanes. But this this is going to be something that's considered. In a very phased way and in partnership with the city of London, MTO, city of St. Thomas. Because that potential widening really only makes sense if we if if that gets continued on to Highway one or sorry, 401. City of London is working on its mobility master plan and has identified that widening as well. So it would it would just need to be done in tandem. Now, we know that adding road infrastructure in Elgin is more complex than in city of London. Elgin just has so many creeks and streams and more environmental concerns, especially south of. Ferguson line, that stretch where we've got Kettle Creek. So that's going to be a that's some, that's something that's going to be really looked at carefully in in the environmental assessment. That's that's the first step. The other. Capacity improvements are about. Optimizing the design of of the roads that are shown on the map here. Belmont Road and portion of Brown McNeil line, John Wise line to the south. Just optimizing them to to help. Traffic move safely and conveniently and and also paying attention to the concerns of other. Users of the corridor as well, if if increased separation is needed for pedestrians. That should be implemented in tandem as well. And. Southeast of St. Thomas, like along Centennial Ave, we recognize that. Centennial Ave, just south of Highway three is really a constrained corridor. So there isn't a lot of room to to help that. To to support the connection via Centennial Ave there. So we've looked at. Optimizing the design of the of Elm to the east of Centennial. And depending on what MTO plans as far as connectivity to the industrial lands. The upload of Yarmouth Center line, that that portion between Highway three and Elm Street. Could. Could really support that that bypass and connectivity rule. So if you're just moving back two slides, please, to the the list of actions, draft actions. So the first few actions. Were just one action previously to implement the road improvements. But we thought it was important enough to separate the Highbury Avenue related actions to its own action. Because the first step is that environmental eventual environmental assessment, and it needs to be in partnership with the area municipalities and with with MTO as well. And pending the findings of that environmental assessment to to then move on to implementation as appropriate. And. Yeah, so so those road capacity improvements are on the supply side. Action A three there speaks to the demand side that the county. Could recommend or could develop a carpool lot strategy at strategic locations to just help reduce the demand a little bit and help people who would like to to carpool for their trips to to do so. The right side of this slide speaks, just explains design optimization a little bit more. For example. Optimizing a roadway to that rural arterial standard could include, and this is really key minimizing direct driveway access. As those areas are developed to to try to limit the direct access onto the roadways and find other ways to to connect. The land use to the roadway and. Increasing shoulder widths potentially, reducing roadside obstacles and so forth. And actually, we can, we'll get into some of those in a in a later slide when we talk a little bit about. Cross section design guidance. Do you pause for questions, comments? Carry on.
Not seeing any at this time.
Thank you. Okay, so the next focus area for goal four is updating county road classifications and design. And these speak to. Applying the functional road classification framework to the the county road network as as has been done in the official plan with with input from. The transportation master plan study in its early phases. Yeah, the the functional road classification. Framework could be. A good tool for consistency in a decision making and protecting the roadways, mobility and land access functions into the future. And reducing conflict between those trying to access properties and those trying to move through the county. So that also involves implementing some upgrades to existing roadways to to better match. The typical characteristics of the different types of or the different road classes as appropriate. Noting that this is much easier to do when when you have a new roadway. And there are a lot of challenges and constraints when you're trying to retrofit certain roads. So so there. There, we just recommend that what is was feasible and and makes sense be done that way and not strictly trying to. Match the framework and guidelines. We we did identify a few locations where we'd recommend changing the functional road classification. And that'll be on the next slide in a moment. And we have also developed some roadway cross section design guidance and wrote a roundabout screening tool to also help roadway design in the county. Okay, next. Next slide, please, yes. So it's hard to to see on this map, but yeah, this this shows or at this scale. But it shows the functional road classes of county roadways and. It. So that includes arterials, which are the highest order of roadway, most facilitates. Highest priority on on moving traffic in the county. Then we have collectors and then local roads and the focus on local roads is more accessing local. Local development, local lands. So we'd recommend that. John Wise line in Norman Lindell, east of Sunset Drive and. Elm Elm line, Elm Road. To the southeast as well, those those are. We recommend that those would be. Reclassified as major arterial so that you can really. Protect that mobility function on those roadways. And also in Almer. The reclassification of the county road 53. Bypass, that's that's already in in place. Elm Street and and Beach Street, just some some tweaks to help encourage a bit more traffic to use that route as opposed to John Street. Yeah, together with that reclassification to major arterial for for that downtown bypass route. Okay, next slide, please. We've also developed some road cross section design guidance and it is focused on ensuring there's enough. Width of the the different cross section elements. That it, the the guidance is an appendix in the phase two, three report. We've got two examples of of roadways showing the the cross section widths of different elements. On the top, we have a rural local roadway. And typically those have 20 meter rate of ways to work with. And the the lower example is a rural major or minor arterial roadway. Often those have wider widths, but not necessarily. So with a rural arterial roadway, you would typically strive to have more of a shoulder. And a bit of a a part of that could be paved as appropriate. And that just helps with the load and on the roadway. Some flatter slopes for the the ditch, trying to keep obstacles farther away from the traveled right away and so forth. Okay, another focus area on the next slide is rationalizing county transportation assets. And I know that the findings for this focus area have been presented to the county. So we'll just go through them fairly quickly, but the first one. Was implementing the the results of road rationalization study where we looked at. 12 criteria, segment by segment, looked at connectivity principles and and identified which roads are best suited for the the county to continue to continue to focus on. And which ones seem to be to have more of a. A local function and recommend transferring ownership of those. And then the 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 next two actions are. Initiating the process to close two county bridges on on local roads. Given the the costs and the the lower strategic value of those bridges. And and then also to facilitate the transfer of five bridges that the county currently looks after to the local municipalities on whose roadways. Those bridges are located, okay, next slide, please. So this map, which you've seen before, identifies the roadways that were. Identified for near term transfer totaling 22 kilometers to local municipalities and then a longer term transfer as well. Okay, next slide, please. And then this this map shows the nine county. That the nine bridges that the county looks after that are on local municipal roadways. The the two circles there are the ones that are recommended that the the county continues to look after because of their cost and their strategic value to the network. Gillette's Bridge and Dingle Street Bridge. And two bridges recommended for closure, given the costs and the lower strategic value Fulton Bridge and James. Jamestown Line Bridge and five bridges for transfer to municipalities, local municipalities. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Hey, the the next focus area is on supporting safety on county roads. In the in phase one of the study, we did a collision analysis. We identified the higher frequency collision locations and looked at some of the characteristics of the intersections, locations where those took place and identified some potential mitigating measures. And I understand the county has already been implementing some of those and so yeah, this recommendation is just to continue to monitor and identify those higher frequency collision locations and continue to respond with mitigating measures. Then the next two actions. Speak to just standardizing the the county's response to the requests that it constantly receives to reduce speed limits on county roadways and to implement traffic calming. So it's just about. Providing a consistent response to those requests that takes into consideration the county roads connectivity role and and the road classification and provide some tools that way. The next action speaks to. Well, it's grayed out. We had in in draft implementing an automated speed enforcement strategy and on further reflection and and noting that the county has already looked into this. And doesn't find it suitable at the time that we'll we'll just keep that one out of the strategy for now. And then the the last one is to establish a county safety council to meet with local municipal partner representatives and to share resources and allocate funding for studies and just just to better understand where those safety needs are and better be able to respond to them. Next slide, please. Hey, the next. The next focus area is responsiveness to changes and challenges and just making sure the county is well equipped to to be on top of things as far as transportation goes and to to respond accordingly. The first action is to help ensure that the county has the funding it needs to to implement infrastructure and services needed. As far as transportation goes and and that is to conduct a county development charges background study. The local municipalities already do their own development. Well, they've done their development charges studies and are and they're collecting development charges. But a portion of that growth. Would also apply to to county roads and county infrastructure. So there's merit to exploring that. The next action is just a continuation of what the county is already doing and that is supporting the continued expansion of charging stations countywide. Especially important to the local area, given the electric vehicle. Battery. Industry nearby. Next is to continue to monitor advancements in emerging technologies such as automated vehicles. This is kind of a wait and see, but be ready. Like you can't just jump the gun and be all gung ho or be, you know, all ready to embrace automate automated vehicles and and so forth. We just need to be aware of of the status of those and and provincial regulations and so forth. To be ready to respond to those. Next is to continue the county's traffic class classification count program throughout the county road network. Having that that full set of traffic counts across the county was was so helpful in understanding the transportation needs in the county. We we had analyzed in twenty twenty one, the traffic counts and analyzed in twenty twenty four with the update and it was informative to see where the the growth has been. Yeah, we totally recommend to continue to to conduct that traffic classification account program. And then the next action is to expand beyond that and try to have additional transportation or mobility data available and that could involve partnerships with MTO. MTO. Is like with their Highway three. Network connectivity study that they're they're just embarking on. They noted that there would be some modeling as part of that. So so that would be very helpful for understanding county needs and the city of London conducts a periodic household travel survey and there's potential to partner with them so they could expand into Elgin County and understand their very important commuting market. And they also do travel modeling. So yeah, just being aware of and and seeing what partnerships there could be for additional data and and also Strava data the county is looking at. Strava to help understand the cycling demand in the area. So continuing with those efforts. And then the final action for this area is to conduct a TMP review and update at regular intervals. For example, every five years or so, or as conditions changed as or or become more clear. So that that's a new action. Just wanted to make that explicit in this list of actions. Okay. And then the final focus area for the goal of efficient county and interregional connections. Is passenger passenger transit service provision. And so the first action is to explore the potential for partnerships with other area municipalities that already have passenger transportation services there. There could be potential to to partner with them to extend their services beyond the municipal boundaries into Elgin. So that can include City of Saint Thomas, Middlesex County, City of London, Town of Tilsenberg. So that those partnerships could meet some of the passenger transit service needs in the county. But beyond that, we've also identified. Some priority services that the the county could pilot as well and and we we looked at different service types and would recommend a hybrid of a fixed route and on demand service. So fix route for some of the the key connections between the larger settlement areas and then an on demand service to 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 meet the accessible transportation needs and and to yeah, meet the needs of the more dispersed population in the county. And that could be provided either directly by the county or it could be contracted to an operator which some of the municipalities in the area have been doing. There are some startup costs and some ongoing operating costs associated with providing a a county led service. And then the the third area as far as passenger transit service provision is to to be that one stop shop where like to to assemble all the area transit service information to one spot. So people can see what is available. Shall we move on to what? We'll look at the next slide. Yes. We have a map on this slide showing some of the priority connections. The base of that is the existing connections which have changed recently. We understand that that Tilsenberg Transit is no longer going to Port Burwell. Although the services within Tilsenberg are are continuing, perhaps there's perhaps that's another area for a transit partnership. But the the key connections are between the the central area to City of London and and also between Saint Thomas and Port Stanley and and Elmer. And beyond. Moving on to the next slide and the the next goal, which is healthy communities and these. Here we have three focus area. Three focus areas and and six actions. Okay, next slide. We'll jump into the county's cycling master plan network. And again, this is an action area that you've already heard a bit about through repeater. And we we've developed a priority cycling master plan network and an ultimate cycling master plan network and we'll look at those maps again in a moment. Other actions related to this are to the next action is to continue to adhere to standards and best practices when planning for cycling facilities. And we've summarized those in the phase two, three report as an appendix. So it provides some guidelines for, you know, recommended widths for for paved shoulders and buffers and and cycling lanes and so forth. The next action is just to review and clarify winter maintenance. On on those cycling networks. And just to to make those responsible responsibilities clear between the county and local municipalities. And the final action is to it's kind of a a policy direction. To look beyond the cycling master plan network and as capital improvements are being made, just to to look for opportunities to just make things a little bit easier for for cyclists where where possible or feasible. Hey, next slide, please. So this slide shows the map that you've seen before, the priority cycling master plan network. It focuses on facilities or or routes along the county road network only. And it seeks to provide a a good solid core network of the the key connections needed in the county. And the next slide, please. Yes, here we have the ultimate cycling master plan network adds on to the core network to some additional county road connections. And it also identifies opportunities for additional connections via local municipal roadways. As feasible and and also looks to connect to adjacent municipalities as well, connecting to their identified cycling networks. Next slide, please. Also identified the need for some guidance as far as e-bikes and other micro mobility devices. That are just becoming so much more popular. E-bikes just let you cycle such longer distances easily. But we do need some some regulations and some clarity on where those vehicles should go on on county and local roads. Toronto, for example, has has recently developed a micro mobility strategy. So it outlines where different vehicles should go, which which ones are allowed on cycling lanes and and so forth. And we understand that the province of Ontario is also working on guidance. So we may want to just wait and see what the province comes up with and then how that applies to to county roads. So so there's clarity. And then the final one in this focus area is pedestrian crossings of county roads and we we know that safe crossing of county roads is a key concern for local municipalities. So they have healthy communities. They can walk within the community and make those connections. So we would recommend developing a clear and consistent policy framework for implementing pedestrian crossing opportunities across county roadways as well. Okay, and the final goal, economic prosperity. Thank you. So for this goal, we've identified four focus areas and and nine actions. Which are listed here. Get into those on the next slide, starting with facilitating and managing heavy truck traffic. So one concern we heard about through engagement in early phases of the study is traffic concerns in downtown Elmer. So this goes hand in hand that this recommendation goes hand in hand with the earlier recommendation to to classify the the County Road fifty three. Beach and Elm. Bypass of downtown Elmer. Yeah, it's recommended to also implement some operational modifications to help encourage additional traffic, especially truck traffic to use that bypass route as appropriate. And okay, then the next action is to to work with the local municipal partners and prepare and and promote truck route guidance for Elgin County. It can be hard for truck drivers to to know the best routes to go and to they're not always aware of turning restrictions or or seasonal load restrictions before they they get to the get to the roadway and and see the sign. So a truck route map showing where trucks are encouraged to go, where where the seasonal load limits are, where the the turn restrictions are, for example, in in downtown Elmer in advance, so they can plan their trips would be quite helpful. Third action is to explore with MTO ways to support commercial vehicle enforcement. We understand that drivers do bypass the Putnam Truck Inspection Station on Highway four oh one and they they come down to county roads. Working with MTO to conduct blitzes of of trucks in the area could be helpful, but that would also involve identifying safe locations for those blitzes. And and there could be other means to work with MTO as well for for safe truck movement through the county. And okay, another focus area is supporting the movement of agricultural equipment. This this action, I don't think was in the the draft that you saw. This is a new action. We realize that was an identified need to help support agricultural equipment movement on on county roads and we hadn't captured that in an action. So we were outlining some considerations for for designing maintaining roads with agricultural equipment in mind. So, yep, this last action is ensure that farm equipment is considered in the design and maintenance of rural county roads. Next slide, please. Hey, two more focus areas under economic prosperity. The first is supporting rail freight. There are some railways. In and and near Elgin County. So I think that the best thing for for the county to do is just to continue to support freight rail expansion opportunities and work with stakeholders to encourage rail oriented industrial development. And then the second is to just continue to follow federal guidelines for the design of at grade rail crossings. And undertake proactive maintenance to support safe operation. So as as traffic volumes increase, potential widening, improving of roads, it's continued to make sure that the at grade rail crossings are safe. And the final focus area is supporting cycling tourism. Cycling in Elgin County is is very attractive to cycling tourists and want to continue to support and promote that. So one way to do that is to continue to promote the tourism initiatives such as the three port tour. Another is to promote cycling through clear wayfinding signage throughout the county and also to provide information boards and mapping at tourist destination centers. And then finally, to support local municipal partners as they may when they may wish to provide cycling amenities. At strategic locations, such as bike racks, repair stations and so forth. And that's all thirty nine actions. Thank you for your your attention. And interest. Okay, so moving on to next steps on slide thirty four. Okay. So what's what's coming up next? As noted, public engagement and the associated survey are open through June thirteenth. On June twenty fourth, county staff will present to committee of the whole the engagement findings on these draft recommendations. And any further refinements we are planning to make to those draft recommendations as a result. We'll be working on preparing a TMP summary report. So it'll be it'll be shorter than the phase two, three report. It'll be very action oriented and it will it will lay out some targets by ten year time period for each of those actions and I'll have a sample in just a moment. Yep, and then once that is developed and as approved by county council, that will be posted for thirty day public review and finalized and adopted hopefully. Yeah, just one last slide here. Yeah, this is this is a little hard to see at this scale, but this is what the implementation plan would look like for each. For each action, we would outline some near term targets and some medium term targets and some longer term targets as well as appropriate. And then we would develop some associated costs with each of those as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Anna, for the presentation. Peter, you had your finger up.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to make one comment. Many of the themes that Anna touched upon may not have sounded completely new to council. A lot of these efforts are already established in current practice. I'd say the majority of them are in some form of, of another. They just have not been formalized in a council-approved policy. So the TMP looks to adopt and formalize these practices so that they continue to be practiced and supported by council and, and it, it would provide an avenue for staff to relate to the public and for the public to understand and have expectations.
Thank you, Peter. I was very happy to see farm transit being talked about because the last couple of years, we found that the province does not understand that or choose to recognize it. And I'm glad we have something mentioned about how farmers are able to move across the county, east and west and north and south. And that's very important for me, my, and I believe for everybody around the table here. So thank you for that. It's nice to see we're moving forward on this. I hope we move forward on this at least. I think it's important that we're progressive. We don't want to go back and look at the city of London's missed opportunities over the past thirty or forty years. And I think being ahead of the game is going to benefit us for a very long time. Anyway, questions from council members? Counselor, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Results of the presentation from the Director of Engineering Services and Arcadis Professional Services Canada Incorporated be received and filed.
Move her secretary, please. Deputy Warden Ketchabah and Counselor Latham. Questions? I think Counselor Cookett, you had your hand up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, for you to, and, or Peter. First, a comment, great, a great report. My brain is full. Trying to, trying to pick pieces out of it. Interesting that you talk about the Beach Street and Elm Street as a bypass to downtown Elmer. That's, that's very interesting. I do have a question about that. I noticed you mentioned that, and perhaps you're, you're not that far into the details, but you mentioned that it needed to be tweaked and, and and do some operational modifications. Are there any specifics to the operational modifications or the tweaks to that particular bypass?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Counselor Crockett. Yes, the Elm and Beach Street, County Road 53, has always been known by staff anyway, as a truck bypass. We understand that there are operational constraints for large trucks to make movements in the downtown core at Highway three and John Street. In, in many instances, those large vehicles have to encroach into oncoming lanes in order to make their movements and cars are backing up and it's, it's not an ideal state. It's a congested corner. Buildings are, there's no room for expansion. So many years ago, the, the establishment of County Road 53 was purposely intended to be a truck bypass route to, to avoid that conflict. There are existing signage that is up. However, we believe that there's always room for improvement. And I think we should be advertising the fact that this exists, informing drivers well in advance that this is the appropriate route they should be traveling at to avoid that congested corner. And predominantly, we would be looking at signage and we would build upon the existing half-load road map that's contained on the county website that's referred to very frequently. And people request this. They want to understand where these restricted roads are. We want to build upon that and show where permissive truck routes are. And we will be advertising this truck bypass route throughout the downtown core of Elmer.
Thank you. If I can follow up, certainly, certainly that is a useful route to have. And the advertising for trucks is, is, is very good. I just, I noticed this is on page fifty-six, I think, of our package, which shows a map of 2024 weekday average traffic on Elgin County roads. And it shows the, the average daily traffic on John Street North between 10,000 and 12,000, which probably is correct, but it's strange that the actual highway three, which if you live in Elmer, you actually are, are seeing most of the traffic going east, west on highway threes through, through downtown. And it doesn't show actually any traffic there at all. Maybe that's not part of the study. I'm not sure where we, you know, what happened there.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Crockett. You're correct. We've only focused on county roads on this map and only provided traffic data for that. We do not provide any provincial or local road traffic count data in, within the study.
Other questions? Counselor Widner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Maybe through to Peter. He alluded the fact there's intersection hotspots where there's a lot of collisions. How is the county alerted to intersections with a lot of collisions? Did the police notify you or do you have to go digging or how does that work?
Thank you. Through, through you, Mr. Warden, to, to Counselor Widner. We hope to formalize a process because right now we have a practice where we review collisions annually. We, we have a provincial data system called ARIS, which we, we have access to and we download all the collision reports. And we typically receive them between ninety and a hundred and twenty days after the fact. We take special note of injuries that occur on roadways. And we, we collect that data and make appropriate capital decisions based on that data. For example, this year, council approved the implementation of traffic signals at Dalewood Road and Ron McNeil Line. The traffic volumes there do not warrant traffic signals, but there's a collision warrant that has been met. We've had an average of more than five collisions annually for the last three years at that location that could be alleviated with protected turning movements that signalized intersection would provide. So we do our best to be informed with the media from information from local municipalities or counselors. And we follow that up with real data from collision warrants, sorry, collision data from the ARIS system for the provincial system from actual physical police collision, collisions that have occurred. We, that's our practice. We're going to now formalize that so that there's an expectation fully understood by council and the public that this is what we look to and on, and, and that's how our recommendations for investment are related to council.
Counselor Noble?
Mr. Warden, at this point, we don't have a protocol for transferring of the roads, like as far as how that affects the levy and stuff like that. At what point will that come into play, Peter?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Noble. At a, a previous council meeting, council provided staff direction to formulate a transfer protocol. There is a mechanism to transfer the roads through the municipal act. However, there is no transfer protocol mechanism. So that's yet to be established. However, what staff is proposing is that identified projects within the cap, the county's current ten-year plan, the funds that have been already approved by council and that are included in the ten-year plan would follow the asset in the transfer and be related to the municipality. How, how the timing works, how that phasing works has yet to be developed. And staff needs to have a conversation with the county's director of physical, of, of financial services to ensure that we can afford a plan that we present to council for their review and approval at a future meeting, hopefully before the end of the summer.
I guess my question with the three municipalities to the west with their EDR issues with the four waters, how is that addressed in this, this plan or, or is it?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to answer your question. Absolutely. It's, it's fully understood. And, and in the phase one report of opportunities, we identify what that EDR route is. And we understand that that's an important corridor. And I believe it even played a part in the scoring system for the road rationalization criteria. Some of them are lower volume roads, but we understand their importance because of the ERD, ERD corridor. Yes.
Counselor Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Peter and Anna. I think I heard this, or if I'm mistaken, I apologize. I think I heard you talking about the use of DC funds for roads. And I'm just wondering whether, you know, just, just to clarify, is there a, a DC study that allocates a certain amount of DC funds for roads? Or is, is that part of the upcoming plan?
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Crockett. So what, what Anna's and Arcadis's study has identified is that many of these needs are triggered by development for the county. And it would be prudent to have a mechanism in order for the development to help offset some of those investments. I understand from the Growth Steering Committee that DC charges is something that council may entertain going forward. The report suggests that it, it's a prudent method of helping to offset some of the growth funding that's required.
Any further questions or comments? Counselor Noble, go ahead.
Mr. Warden, the one roundabout that St. Thomas has put at Centennial in the end of the bypass. There's talk that that road is going to get extended, but it, it looked like there were some provisions in our documentation, but that it didn't show St. Thomas's plan. Can we speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Counselor Noble. That's a new development. So we've understood that that existing plan strangely dumped the, the end of that major arterial roadway onto Yarmouth Center Road potentially. Most recently, and I think it was just earlier this week, the MTO have released a request for proposal to complete a planning study for the expansion of Highway three easterly, all the way to Hacienda Road potentially. And that has been just released yesterday. It's a multi-year phased plan. The consultant is required to have in a, a design report prepared within three years' time. So it's going to take a, a number of years for them to study the corridor, environmental constraints, potential utility relocates, have public meetings along the way. This is something the MTO has just released. And unfortunately, they used to have a designated corridor and it was released by the, the province only a handful of years ago. So it, it appears that the MTO has identified the need for this. And it, the projection of Highway three could empty onto the existing Highway three in a short section before Belmont Road, or it could extend further all the way to the other side of Elmer. And that's what the study will review. And like I said, it's hot off the press. It's just been released by the MTO recently, last few days.
Went through a lot of work on that a few years ago. Any other questions? Not seen any further questions. I'm going to call the vote. If there's nothing else, all in favor? Motion carries. Thanks so much for coming in, Anna. Thank you, Peter.
Consideration of bylaw number 2523 confirmation being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the municipal council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the May 27th, 2025 special meeting. Resolve that bylaw number 2523 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Move her in second, please. Hans and Widner, all in favor? Motion carried. Admon.
Results that we do now adjourn at 1:51 PM.
Move her in second, please. Latham and Cookett, all in favor? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.